Commissioner Lloyd.
President.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzinoff.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Davis. Do we have a call?
Can we have an approval for the minutes?
I'll move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any public comment to the committee? Public comment going twice? Public comment closed. Any communications to the committee?
No ma'am.
Alright, old business? Hearing no old business, let's go to new business, Resolution 1383. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Environmental Testing and Consulting Agency to provide lead inspections, risk assessments, clearances, and asbestos testing for rehabilitation programs.
Come on. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any question and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just, is this for housing, or is this for businesses, or what is this?
Planning Director can speak to it.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is for all of our HUD houses that we do renovations for. We have to do lead and asbestos testing, so that's the contractors that hire somebody doing it, and they test for all of that to get a report back. And then after we, if we do find lead in the house, they go back and do a post inspection, make sure it's cleared.
Ma'am Chair, if I may, is this the same company that removes it then, or they have to hire somebody else to remove it?
So our contractor, all our contractors certified to remove it, they just are the ones that test for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 1386, approval of a proposed amendment to the 2024-25 appropriations resolution reallocating unspent CDBG funding for future use.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, questions?
Ma'am Chair, through you, to Mr. Freeman, can you list the organizations where there's changes to it?
Yep, Derek can speak to that. It's just, I think they've entered their contracts and had some leftovers.
Yep, so everything in here are contracts that just had leftovers. They put stuff over for bid. So we have Clayton Township, Swartz Creek, Gaines Township, Yenna Township. Some total, like some are ninety-two, ninety-one dollars, eighteen thousand, eleven thousand, eight thousand. Total about forty thousand.
Okay, and where are we sending it to?
So the recaptured funds will, we do two steps with those. If it's a large amount of money, which this isn't, then we would put a call out to our local units of government that are potentially, costs are increased. A small amount of funds like this would just go into our programming for our new projects coming up next year, and it just goes into a funding forum.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, Commissioner Wayill.
So, help me understand, the contracts were issued for CDBG to Clayton, Swartz Creek, et cetera.
Yeah.
And they did not spend the money?
The cost came in less than they estimated.
Okay, so they got their project funded, leftover money comes back to the county?
Yes.
I see, okay. And so these municipalities could then, if we make an opportunity for anyone to come back, they could return with another project?
So, no. So that, the money would either go to existing, so for example, Swartz Creek. If they had another existing project that was over budget, we would transfer it to that project.
Okay.
They don't have another project, so then it goes back into the pot and then gets redistributed. But we did redo the funding for them, so everybody gets that.
Okay, alright, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any other business before the committee? I did want to back up because I was remiss in acknowledging a former Commissioner, and I think it's appropriate for us to do that today. Renetta Speed was a former county Commissioner who passed away recently, and Commissioner Lloyd and Commissioner Winfrey and I attended her home-going services. We did present a resolution to the family, and I think it's appropriate for us to just have a moment of silence and recognition. Thank you.
And if I could, on the same remarks, we lost one of our council in the city of Burton. He's probably the longest-serving councilman in this, probably in Michigan. And his name is Tom Martin Diaco, and he passed away a few weeks ago. So if we could have a moment for him, I appreciate that also. Thank you.
Any other business before this committee? Hearing none, we are adjourned at 5:35.
I open up the call to order, the Finance Committee at 5:35. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd.
President.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzinoff.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
I need approval of the amendments, Resolution 1422. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we now take time for public comment to the committee? Is there anybody behind me that wants to make a public comment to the committee?
I'll see.
Go on a second time, and I guess a third time. Public comments is closed. We don't have any communications. Old business, new business. Resolution 24-1289, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Corrections in the amount of $617,683 to provide for Genesee County's Community Corrections Program for the fiscal year ending 2025. The budget for this grant is attached. Does anybody have any comments or questions? I do, is this a yearly grant?
It's our annual funding for that program.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1331, approval of to create, post, and fill one public health nurse coordinator position.
Move it.
Support.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Shoemaker.
First, is this a budgeted expense in the budget?
Yes.
And are we replacing someone, or like swapping positions around, or is this just a brand-new position we're creating?
Removing some positions around, what we're finding out right now, what's happening is our supervisor, who is over our entire CD program, is in the field with the nurse doing most of these TV investigations, tracking. Right now, we have had a total of sixty-two cases in this year. In the state of Michigan, it's only been like one fifty, but we've had sixty-two here. And so for anyone with an active case, we have to follow them for six months. Late-in cases, we have to follow them for up to three months. And so our, we need our supervisor in office overseeing all these communicative diseases programs.
May, Mr. Chair continues. Have you received any increase in funding to cover this, or is this just moving funds around to make sure you cover it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1345, approval of a grand award from Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund in the amount of $300,000 to provide for the-
Number three.
Oh man, I tell you what. Can we do four?
Sure.
Alright. Renovation of the historic pedestrian bridge at Genesee County's Richfield County Park. The budget for this grant is attached.
Support.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1340, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the fourth quarter 2324 investment report.
So moved.
For, anybody have any questions or comments?
I do, through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Freeman, or to Crystal, how much invested, and what is the return?
It's the Treasurer's Office here?
No. I mean, what is our total, you have an idea of what our total general fund, like, we can get you those numbers. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna fluctuate, right?
They handle the investing through meter investments.
Okay.
So we record the activity in my office, but we don't track how much is invested in each case. But we can get you that information.
Through the Treasurer's Office, and I can tell you that once we hired meter, we went from making like under one percent, like almost nothing, to, you know, we're making probably now somewhere in the neighborhood of four percent.
Do they ever come in and do like a report, like to the board, like the actual third-party?
We, they have been here before, there was no questions of them, but they could go over this report with the board if you'd like.
I'll talk to our Finance Chair.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1347, approval to accept a grand award from the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund in the amount of $300,000 to provide for the Flint River access at the confluence of Swartz Creek.
Come on.
The budget of this is attached.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. One is very specific. Where is the confluence located? And then maybe just a general overview of what this will allow people to do that they can't do on the Flint River right now?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioners. So as far as the location goes, it's going to be where the Flint River and Swartz Creek come together, which is behind where the watershed coalition building is.
Okay.
As part of this project, there's going to be an accessible walkway down to the river with an accessible kayak launch.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1380, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Hurley Medical Center in an amount not to exceed $40,000 to provide for histology services and the medical, to the medical examiner's office. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following account.
So move.
Support.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is obviously budgeted expense, are you, the budget?
Budgeted, Keith?
We need ten thousand more.
Ten thousand dollars. Can you come up and explain why and what's going on? We're cozy tonight.
It's cozy, cozy. It's an estimate. We currently use McLaren for our histology. It haven't been the best in billing us. Took them three years to send us our most recent bills, we haven't been able to track it very well. So we're estimating about thirty to thirty-five thousand a year. I think it's ten thousand more when we come to it.
So, we just gotta come up with that out of general fund, is that what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
Anything else, anybody? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 24-1388, approval of proposed budget amendment to the 2425 appropriations resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request.
So move.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1392, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the week's ending, September fifteenth, twenty-four through October twenty-seventh, twenty-four, in a total amount of $96,585,247.24. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I don't think we have any other business, so I adjourn this meeting at?
Five forty-four.
Five forty-four.
Alright, Government Operations Committee called to order at five forty-four. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd.
President.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzinoff.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment to this committee? Any public comment? No public comment, thank you. Communications, there are none. No old business, under new business, we have Resolution 2024-534, approval of a grant award from Region Three Homeland Security Planning Board in the amount of $38,900 to provide for the purchase of ten Flock cameras. The budget for this grant is attached.
Move with a question.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Flock is obviously the manufacturer of the camera.
Yep, the Under Sheriff is here, he can answer any questions you have.
Yes, sir.
Is Flock the manufacturer of the camera?
It's the service that we use. It's for, I don't know if you know what Flock is. It's, we have cameras all around the entire county, and this is ten more cameras we're adding. And what it does, it assists us because, you know, say where they're at, obviously. We have crimes in specific areas, like even infrastructure. We can see the cars that were through there by license plates, and it helps us for our investigation. These actually are a hundred percent funded for two years, and my question was to my emergency manager, I said, well, what happens after two years? He said, if there's no funding, then they take the cameras back. So we're not gonna, we don't have to continue the service, it's just for two years.
May continue.
Mr. Shoemaker.
So who's, the funding includes monitoring of these cameras also, or is it just recording, and then we go through if there's any-
We monitor ourselves, sir.
Okay, do we have to have additional staff for that?
No. We have several deputies and sergeants throughout our undercover operations that can monitor those.
Okay, alright. How many do we have now?
Then?
I don't know the exact amount we have in the county, sir. I can get an exact amount for you.
If you could.
Yeah. And other agencies have them also, Flint City. And what Flock does is, they don't allow, they try not to allow you to use a service unless you're a part of it. Like, if Flint City had it, and we didn't have it, we couldn't try to tap into their resources. And now that we're all together, and everybody has, whoever has them can tap into it. We, of course, help anybody else that needs help out there.
A little big brother-ish, but okay.
Do we have additional comments or questions?
Yes.
If I may, so Flock is the company that gives us the camera, that's the name of the company. And the way I understand it is that when one of the cameras hits a license plate, and that license plate is on some sort of database-
Could be a stolen vehicle, it could be, we're, you know, we're looking for somebody for homicide.
Yep, so that license-
And that plate's in there, when that hits, our guys can-
How do they receive the notifications?
We have it, like I say, we have, we do monitor it.
But do you know the, is it through, is it to the phones of the undercover officers, or?
We have, we have.
You're not allowed to say it, it-
We have, we just-
I don't want you to say anything-
I don't want to get into too much of the detail. It's not big brother, really, it's to help people solve.
And then last question, how does this, this purchase relate to number ten, which is also Flock? Although we call them Flock Safety Falcon Cameras in this one, and they're just Flock-
That's our auto theft unit.
Okay.
Stolen cars, you know, they use it the most. If there's a stolen vehicle, and if we get into that, we have nine people assigned to auto theft now. It's a multi-jurisdictional
Okay.
detail, and there are eight other police agencies and one of our personnel that are assigned to game.
I'm pretty sure Flushing has Flock cameras. You may not know that, but I read about it on the Flushing Facebook page, so they must.
Unfortunately, I have a detailed-
There's other maps.
Agency, I could probably bring somebody in or follow up with it if you need to know, but it's just-
No, 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 I'm good, thank you. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I've been told that I missed the approval of the minutes. Why people re-elected me, I'll never know. Resolution 2024-1423, what's your pleasure?
Support.
Moved and supported, is their discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Back to new business, Resolution 2024-629, approval of a grant award from the Charles Stewart Mott Foundation in the amount of $1,183,687 to provide for the Genesee County Sheriff's Office, Police Patrol, and Investigative Services within a ten-square-mile-
Area.
Within a ten-square-mile area within the city of Flint. The term of this grant is from June first, 2024, through May thirty-first, 2025.
I'll move it with a couple of questions.
Moved and supported. Commissioner Lloyd.
So one question, I see that the grant is from June first, 2024, through May thirty-first, 2025. We're in November, is there a reason?
Thank you.
If I may, Crystal, I mean, you go from back and forth, this-
It's more of a time, you know, time and question?
Yes.
So, we were working with the CS Mott Foundation, and the previous grant award, there was a lot of equipment missing, and we were having trouble getting that delivered. So we were working back and forth with them to see if they were gonna allow us to carry over those funds, or if we'd have to pay that back and then get a new award. We finally worked it out, or if they were allowed to carry it over. So then we were working on the budget amendment to get it in, to get approved. So it was put on pause for that period of time, and then we finally got the approval to carry over the funds that were spent.
Thank you for the explanation. So, two questions, you may have just answered it, but I didn't hear the answer. How much of the grant has already been spent?
Of this award?
Yes.
I would have to run that reporter, I could give that to you in a minute.
Okay, it's not a deal break, I'm just-
Yeah, I've just been, we're almost halfway through, so probably about half of that, because most of it is related to personnel.
Okay, and then-
We funded a lot of equipment with the last award, and then now it's mostly just personnel costs.
Yeah, and then one additional question, and then so, given the reduced amount of time left in the grant, it's just a couple of months, will be able to spend this by the end of the, okay, alright, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the, I know the Mott Foundation doesn't give out money just to give it out. So can you talk a little bit about the impact of this 1.1 million dollars?
I have all the stats here, I can take the whole night, I can make sure everybody gets a copy.
Just give us a general-
Over, we have, just this year alone, probably just under a hundred guns we've recovered off the street. We've, like I say, it's, it's working. We produce, my understanding is crime is down 26%. Homicides are down, we're making an impact. But like I said, I've got a whole three years right here, and I can give it to Mr. Freeman if he would like to make copies of it for everybody. I'm sorry, I don't have copies for everybody, I can have an email to everybody, but it's pretty, it's really interesting, and there's, like I say, it would take all night to go through every, amazing stat, that's it.
If you could leave a copy with Mr. Freeman, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We've got Commissioner Ellenberg.
Yeah, I just have a question, Mike. So, is there any way, or maybe you've already done it, give us the, like a map of the area that is covered, you know, if it's ten-square-miles?
I think, I thought we gave somebody that I can-
Yeah, I think we got one before, but it would be nice to be able to tell your residents that you got extra coverage in those areas.
I can make sure, I can make a copy of it also.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's alright.
Commissioner Kuzinoff.
This is the same ten-square-miles that you've done the last couple of years.
We did a little bit, yes, sir. We did a little bit. We added three personnel. That was, gosh, maybe a year ago, year and a half.
Yes, the amount of square miles.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, up to ten.
Okay, and then this is for the same amount of money that the Mott Foundation, or does this increase to-
They increased it, yes.
To cover the increased area. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lloyd.
No, I was just to follow up to Dr. Brown. I know a portion of this section is in the district I represent, and I know when attending a number of the, you know, Neighborhood Association meetings and so on and so forth, residents talk about seeing the patrol vehicles and how it has served as a deterrent to folks who may be, you know, casing out neighborhood and so on and so forth. And then in a time where response time is, you know, a lot of times not as great in the city, you know, they've seen greater response times than you know what officers have been out there. So overall, residents do feel that they see it, at least in my district, and it's been positive.
And when we're working, when they call from a police officer, they get to see more, it's not a call phone. I'm not trying to say anybody's doing anything, but when we're there and they call, we show up, probably within ten minutes or less. And a lot of times, they can wait a long time, or you can just have to call and complain to them.
Please, Commissioner Ellenberg.
Yes, Crystal had stated that the 1.1 million was basically going towards salaries?
Mostly, yeah.
Okay, does that-
I think there was a little bit of equipment in this year's budget, but most of that was purchased last year.
Does that go toward their benefits and stuff also?
Yep, their salaries, and then any fringes of their pay.
So we see that coming back to basically the general fund, or being able to use in another way, if that money is being covered by Mott?
No, there's actually a separate fund that we set up for this, and they actually give us the check upfront, so we don't have to worry about drawing down as we spend the money. We get the full check upfront, and then that funds their, their personnel throughout the year.
And you might have said it, like, how many officers?
Eight.
Eight, okay.
There's a sergeant, lieutenant, and six.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
I have a couple, like a three-part question here. One, are there any matching funds tied to this?
Yes.
How much?
Does this pay through the ARPA dollars? It's already been allocated.
What happens with the ARPA dollars? Season assist in 2026.
You have to decide if you want to continue, if it comes forward for the next year, you would have to decide if you want to match, or if you want the grant to just continue.
What was the match amount this year?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
My, my next question would be to the board is, while I see the results in this, would we be billing to this with any other municipality? while I see the results in this, would we be building to this with any other municipality if they could get the money, the grant money, are we willing to put up thirty percent roughly? For them to increase policing with either Sheriff's Department or whatever group they have? You know, Flint Township actually, you know, rate of crime has actually grown tremendous. They're struggling, and that's one of our shopping districts, we can't afford to really lose. So that's my question, should we all, should we look, go out there and recommend to different municipalities that we're willing to take additional ARPA funds or funds and continue to fund other forms of policing outside of their group? You know, just, just so, put everyone's cap to think about. Because, you know, there are other areas in the county that are struggling with policing and crime and other stuff like that. The, the other thing is, you'd mentioned that they'd given us some for equipment and stuff like that, Crystal? Is that for maintenance, is that what we figured on, like our vehicles and stuff like that? Cause the cost of vehicles are getting, especially Tahos are, are getting very pricey, and the cost to repair them and tires and so on and so forth is very expensive.
I don't remember what else was on the list, I know there was some side-by-sides, some Tahos. Do you remember what else was on that list? I can get a copy of it, I don't remember what else was on there, it was quite.
Do we buy some vehicles?
Yes.
But, just, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Please.
It just gets my mind reeling, cause I think of all the costs associated with, you know, sending an officer on the road, a lot of people don't associate with, when we just say, oh, they make this much a year. You know, there's obviously vehicle, there's maintenance on it, this is obviously covered in their insurance. But we don't have any money set for maintenance on the other vehicles that are on the road already under this program?
Um, as long as we have the agreement, we can pay it. Now, to your point, when the grant ends, those vehicles would have to be repurposed, and then those expenses would have to be funded by a different program.
Well, it's a question, you had, said you had six officers and a sergeant, is that what I just heard? Lieutenant. Okay, if, how many new vehicles do we purchase?
I'd have to get one.
For eight? Then, cause there's eight officers?
I don't remember.
I don't think it was eight.
That's what I'm saying, so where?
I've got you down to get that list of equipment for you.
Well, I just wanna know how we're funding the repairs, because obviously, well, example. Let's say a couple of officers had an accident, something happened, and we gotta, we fund that.
Yes.
So, uh, we need to set funds aside like a, uh, I don't want, what type of fund do I wanna call that? Or, just, yeah, so, something that's set aside, so guess what, when this happens, because it's great to have these programs, but unfortunately, we know there's gonna be additional costs. And the question is, this board again asked the answers, ask us, are we willing to eat those on top of the three hundred and fifty? Cause it's not obviously inside what they're approving for us. So, um, th- tho- those are things we've, we've, we've got to address, and be, I think as a board, more diligent moving forward to go, these are the additional costs we see. You know, um, unfortunately, you know, we are, you know, we're a government entity, and we can keep coming up with funds as long as we can keep raising taxes, but, you know, none of us wanna do that. So, um, if you could get me that list of how we're covering maintenance and what we do.
Sure.
Cause I, I would like to see a fund set aside for accidents also, cause that's pretty pricey this last year.
Is there a mileage line item within the grant this year?
I can get it for you, but I don't want to.
That's fine, we'll get a, we'll get a breakdown of the budget for the grant, and then I think that'll answer some of those questions that you're asking, so. And we can get that before next Wednesday.
I just have one other one, sorry.
Mr. Shoemaker. No, please.
What, since it is most of the city of Flint, is it any other jurisdiction outside of the city of Flint? My next question is, is, do you know why they didn't go to the city of Flint to, so the city of Flint could hire more officers? Instead of the Genesee County Sheriff's Department?
Well. I mean, because of the, because of when we had a cooperation with the city, how it, uh, with the, with the lockup.
Mike, I'll talk to you later, but I understand.
I just, yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Do we have additional?
I, 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 I was, I can't speak for the city, but one of the things I was gonna add to it is that, another thing with this, with this grant and the work that they're doing, they're responding to a lot of calls that the city doesn't handle as priority calls. Like B and E's, for instance. Where if you call, somebody broke in my house, nobody may show up. Not, not throwing off on the city, but we're, we're talking about the details of this. Whereas, there have been folks who had, somebody maybe breaking the house, you know, where they call and actually somebody shows up because of this. And so I know when you talk about some of the patrol in downtown Flint, some of the kinda surrounding areas where the city is not really able with the manpower, they have to really focus on the kinda detailed, kinda attention and patrols. You had a Mott Foundation who's saying, hey, listen, we have some interest in making sure that this is, you know, that it's patrolled, that there's a presence and that kinda thing. And the, because of Ignite and Ghost and, you know, you know the programs a lot better than me, the initiatives a lot better. I believe that they see those as more, where there's manpower more available, there's more focus and so on and so forth. Same way with the state police and some of the stuff that they do, there's some stuff they respond to that the city may not, and then vice versa, there's some calls that they won't respond to at all. They'll say, no, that, we're not here for that, so, uh, maybe that's one way of kinda addressing why the, the Sheriff's Department versus the city of Flint. Uh, I think, you know, that money will get absorbed. So anyway, that's just my two cents about it, based on what I know.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just, just, cause you get my mind going here. If, if you gave them that kinda money, they, they, they could increase their manpower though, and hopefully response times would improve though. That's, that's, like you said, it, it, there's obviously more to the story, and we'll go from there, but I just, like I said, I, I just am curious, because we have a lot of increased liability with this, and I think it's a great program, the results have been proven to us from the Sheriff's Department, they've, they've been kind enough to share them with me since it started, uh, years ago. But, you know, we also gotta understand that there's a lot of risk we take on, and I don't know if it's all covered in this, so, just, I'd like you guys to think about that moving forward, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? So this is where I have a couple of things. Um, so the award letter is in our packet, and we have a, a report due, an interim report due shortly, December first? Yeah, December first. And it's, it's data and other things from June one through October thirty-first. But, to, to Commissioner Brown's point, data is only one of the things that the Mott Foundation wants us to report on, so let me read you what we have to report on. Data on crime trends within the defined area, which is what you referenced. Description of proactive strategies to address crime hotspots and/or trends. Community policing tactics deployed to work with residents to reduce crime. Description of cooperation with other law enforcement agencies to reduce crime in the defined area. And then lastly, report on progress seeking additional support for the Operation Arrowhead Plan. So all that's the narrative piece of the report, then of course we have a financial component too. I guess a question would be, who, who compiles the report? Is it your office, Crystal, or is it you in combination with the Sheriff's folks?
Yeah.
And, and second question is, I think getting to what Dr. Brown said and some others, I think we should get a copy of it in the, at the commission, so we can see the answers to all of those required compliance points. So who writes the report and who submits it and?
We take care of that, and of course, we've been doing, we've been completing every task on there. It's obvious, because they continue to support the, the grant.
So they, they would handle the statistics side of all of it and the program reporting, and then my office has a financial analysis.
Financial narrative, so who submits it?
Our officers, sir.
Okay, so when you submit the interim report on, on or before December first, can we get an email copy of that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Alright, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Alright, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two one nine, approval of a contract between Genesee County and the Child Advocacy Team in the amount of six hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred twenty dollars to provide legal services for children who are the subject of child protective and delinquency petitions. The term of this contract is from October first, twenty twenty-four to September thirty of twenty twenty-five. The cost of this contract will be paid from the accounts listed.
Moved it.
Moved and supported, we have discussion, Commissioner Shoemaker.
I'm just, again, uh, to echo on something, uh, Commissioner Lloyd mentioned, and I've mentioned this for years, is why can't we have these things brought to us in advance? This is October first.
Rhonda Ayam is here, she can speak to that for you.
That is a good question, I have so many agenda items, I think they got split amongst several meetings.
Is, is there a reason we can't do it two months in advance, three months in advance? I just, I mean, we, a lot of these things, you know, you know, I've been blessed enough to be here for a while, and they come to us every year. So it's not like they pop up there surprise, or, you know, it's kinda like, you know, my taxes are gonna, I'm gonna get my bill for my taxes, I'm gonna pay them in the spring, and then I've got one in the fall. I know it's coming, so why, I just don't know why we have so many of these.
We have a hard time getting notification from the state on whether or not they're gonna give us grants for the next fiscal year. They are also a nine thirty year end, and it's great for accounting once we get going, cause we're in the same cycle. But they are still deciding what they're gonna award money to, they may increase it, they may decrease it. We put in the budget, I guess, if it's a recurring grant, but we don't know until we get the actual document. A lot of times that's not until mid-October, you know, it is after year end unfortunately. And then they'll say, you have ten days to sign it, it's, it's a, not a great
Gotta put the other grants.
way to do things, but unfortunately, until we know how much we're gonna get, we can't order a copy of the grant agreement, we can't put it in. So you're, you're gonna see a lot on here that are still October one starts. Um, and everybody with grants here is nodding their head, it's something we tried to ask sooner because it is better for us to plan and know exactly what we're going to get. Um, but they're still moving their pot of money around, and then finally give us the award after their budget's all set. We, we tried to get it in as fast as we can, you did see some on the, um, late September or early October agenda. Um, and then they got it in as soon as they can to get it on this agenda, and then there's only one more, you know, for this calendar year to get it in on, so. It's not for lack of trying, I will tell you that, but unfortunately, we, we can't always get it as early as we'd like to. Like I said, we do put it in the budget, if it's a recurring grant, for a guess, on where we think it's gonna fall out. And then when the final award comes through, you'll see a budget amendment attached to actually adjust it to what we're actually awarded.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Is there a reason the grant wouldn't start then after we, the, that's given? Yeah, I mean, cause, obviously they aren't gonna give us the grant last week, if we, cause we don't accept this, we're not getting the grant anyway, so.
Right.
I just don't, I'm just trying to understand from a contractual standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, they want you to send it with between, in our, in the fiscal year, ten-one to nine-thirty, cause that's what their fiscal year is. So they still start at ten-one, so we're, we still know we can pay those people, knowing that the grant.
And if it's probably, if it's a recurring grant, gaps in services for people who need services, it would be an enormous issue, so we're allowed to provide those services even though we don't have all the documentation in place on that.
Now, we do have to be careful, there are some agreements now that will say October first or the date of signature. And that's where it's a problem, trying to get in on an agenda to get it signed, cause we want it to be applicable as early as we can. Um, we tried to talk to Josh, like, is there a way we can do this as an emergency? Um, but we, we do try to get in, I mean, as fast as we can, as soon as we know what that award amount is.
Somebody needs to talk to the state and get those guys going. Well, I, I'm just saying, at some, some people's party just been in charge of all the chambers, you think you could get things done, you know, I'm just saying, James.
The school system as well.
Happens every year.
Get off me.
Let's have some decorum in this.
Sorry.
Anybody else? Comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one two three five. Approval of a contract between Genesee County and Rite of Passages Incorporated in an amount not to exceed six hundred thirty thousand dollars to provide an evening learning center program at Genesee County's Juvenile Justice Center. The term of this grant is from October one, twenty twenty-four through September thirty, twenty twenty-five, the cost of this grant will be paid from the account listed.
Among.
Support. Moved and supported, do we have discussion? Commissioner Kuzino.
Is this a new grant or a yearly?
This is paid from our childcare fund, so we do apply for our childcare fund every year.
We have additional discussion on the motion.
I have a, I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Lloyd.
Um, I, I, you don't have to stand up.
I, no, I'll, I'll come back up, yeah.
Um, can you talk a little bit about the, the substance of this, um, program, and how many, you know, children are served?
Yeah, so, the Evening Learning Center actually is just getting off the ground. The Evening Learning Center is, um, an alternative to detention program, and so it's for high-risk youth who can be in the community but need extra structure in the time that we know a lot of juvenile crime happens, which is typically after school hours until about eight-thirty or nine-thirty at night. So this is structured around those times, and so the youth have, um, homework assistance when they first get there. They eat, we give them homework assistance, and then they have dinner there as well too. This program specifically, Rite of Passages, worked with the University of Cincinnati to develop a gun violence or a violence intervention program that they're going to pilot here, study here, and then hopefully University of Cincinnati will roll that into some other evidence-based models, which we have been trained on across our probation department and in our juvenile justice center. We use those database research-based models. And so, um, we're piloting that here in Genesee County. This is the first alternative to detention in the state of Michigan. So we're kind of trying to launch that.
So this was the brainchild of the University of Cincinnati?
You wanna come, be a brainchild?
You, you.
So, what, we met with them originally, and they said, what do you want your program to look like? And I said, this is what we need, I know for our community and our kids who are particularly high-risk gun violence and community violence is a big issue for them. And so we needed something to specifically target that, and so they developed a program around what we talked about.
And then how many, how many, um?
So right now we only have six kids, because we just launched, right, the center opened, we got kids over there July twenty-sixth, and then they had their staff come into the building, get trained, get acclimated to our building, and then now we're finally launching the program.
Okay, thank you, it sounds great.
You're welcome, yeah.
Commissioner Lloyd?
My questions have been answered, uh, by way of her responses to Dr. Brown.
Uh, Commissioner Shoemaker.
To the chair, um, what, how many kids will be in the program, you said six are over at the facility right now?
Right now, yep, so, but we just launched, and so we're, it has a twenty capacity at once, and we can have um, three cohorts over the course of the year, so they stay in the, kinda, commu- the, community, the building for about twelve weeks, and then there is an aftercare part of the program too, where the staff follow the youth back out into the community to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and hopefully the things that we've taught them have stucked, and they don't kinda go back to hanging out with people they don't need to be with and doing things they don't need to be doing.
Yeah, how, explain to me how you'll measure that, that's.
Well, that's why we have the University of Cincinnati there, cause I am not a researcher, but we're gonna rely on them to really do the de- the, the details, the data and the research for us.
Are, are they receiving any of this money then? The University of Cincinnati?
Rite of Passages is the contractor.
So I understand it.
So the university helped us develop the program and the curriculum that we're using. Rite of Passages is the staffing agency that are implementing everything, and then they're gonna help with the research and the data.
Cause it, it just seems like, I mean, I'm trying to get this, but if you take that out per around six-thirty a year, that's, you know, under two thousand dollars a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's quite, that's, that's quite a bit.
It does seem like it's quite a bit.
You know, when, when we got a fifty-fifty match on it.
Seventy-five twenty-five.
Seventy-five twenty-five, okay.
It's seventy-five twenty-five. But I think also one way to think about it is, these are also alternatives to sending kids to residential placement, and the least expensive residential placement right now is three hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. And it is not in the state of Michigan, we have to send kids to the state of Texas at this point.
So this is, but this is just for this program, this is not, if there's, if we're keep, the rest of the day, this is just a period of the day?
Yes, this is from two thirty.
So we, so on top of this, we have additional costs to keep, keep a juvenile?
We do have a daytime program as well too.
Yeah, so there's a cost to that too, so.
There is.
So that's, that's, I'm saying, three hundred dollars to send them out, times, you know, thirty day, you know, per, per kid, thirty, thirty days a month, you know, there. I just wanna make sure it's being spent as wisely as possible, is there a way that when they come up with their conclusion, you can make sure we get it?
Yeah, absolutely.
And maybe meet with us and actually explain, cause some of us might not, or me, might not understand what we're seeing?
The other thing that I can, yep, the other thing that I think that would be helpful to share with you is the costs of our residential placements and how they've decreased over the time since we've been increasing our community-based services. And in total, our childcare fund is much less than what we spent on residential placements over the course of several years, and I think that would all be helpful for you to see to understand as well too. I think the other thing to understand is community-based. I think the other thing to understand is community-based placements are so much more successful than sending kids to residential. I can tell you the two kids that we sent to residential this year, which is really good for Genesee County, because when I started this job, we had thirty-four kids in residential. We had two, they came back and within two months, they were back in the detention center. So residential, I think that supports the data that residential placements aren't always as successful as we'd like them to be.
Thank you.
Additional discussion?
Yeah. Uh, where, where is rites of passage, uh, located? And are they a community-based organization?
They are for us, they are for us. They have, um, several residential placements as well too, but I think they understood that the direction for kids and juvenile justice is community-based. So they are developing, um, very good community-based programs for kids. And so that's what they've created for here for us is community-based. So, and then they're also gonna start one in Marion County and Kent County, kind of modeled after what we're doing here. But they also have residential placements really as across the United States.
Additional discussion? Are, are they affiliated with Peckham?
No, so Peckham is one, Peckham is the vocational rehab piece of our day treatment program.
Right. Yeah.
So they provide that support services for our kids during the day in our day treatment.
Right, I thought I saw in the, I don't know if it was a contract or.
It was, it probably was for Peckham.
It said Peckham and Rite of Passage was in that, it was under this resolution. In Legastar, I think.
In this resolution?
Well, I thought I saw Peckham referenced. No worries.
Yeah.
If, if it, if it is, we'll figure it out, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution dash two zero two four dash one two eight two. Approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of two hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars to provide for implementation and evaluation of programs aimed to reduce racial and ethnic disparities at the arrest point. The budget for this grant is attached.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to next.
Commissioner Winfrey.
What that means.
I'll just stand up now. So this, um, this grant was, um, you were supposed to develop a program around, um, diversion at the point of arrest. And so what we're doing, what we created the program that we're doing is specifically with Mount Morris Schools and their school resource officer, and we put a mental health professional in the school. And so for, um, cases or kids that normally would have been arrested for something that they did at school and then we would have got the petition, they are using the school resource officer and the mental health professional to do the screenings, the assessment and the safety evaluation to see if we can divert it at that point instead of getting petition and having them in front of the court.
So is this sort of like a pilot program that can be expanded a lot to the?
Well, we're hoping, we're hoping we're gonna show that it's awesome and we can do it across state and other schools.
Do you have additional discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
I just, I just had one that, that sounds wonderful. Um, here's my question though, that there's this portion here that says aiming to reduce racial and ethical, or ethnic disparities. So what is, how is, I didn't hear any portion of that in what you were saying.
So, um, you had to, your community to apply for the grant, your community had to have racial and ethnic disparities. And so we do, in Genesee County, we do have a higher rate of minority youth in our juvenile justice system and arrested. And so we qualified. And so we worked with this, one of the schools that we also could evaluate by our data and our petitions to show that more minority children were being petitioned. So that's what our focus is. So that's why we're working with Mount Morris Schools.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one.
Uh, Commissioner Allenber.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Rhonda, cause to, to apply for all these grants and to get them is a big accomplishment. And to help our kids that are troubled, you know, you're doing a great job, so I appreciate you, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Are you the grant writer on all these?
Yes.
Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Uh, resolution two zero two four dash one two nine zero. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and District Health Department number two to provide for their fiduciary role for all Homeland Security Grants in Region Number Three.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one two nine one. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Attorneys for Indigent Defense, P L L C, in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars to provide legal representation for indigent mothers who are involved with the court and child protective proceedings. The term of this contract is from October one twenty twenty four through September thirty twenty twenty five. The cost for this contract will be paid from accounts listed.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
So this is, is this grant funded at all? Am I missing that?
She can speak to it. This is yours, right, Rhonda? The Rhonda Eime show today?
She should just stay up there.
Part of it is charged to a grant that we have.
I, cause that, my question was, once again, it's October first, I just wanted to, cause it didn't seem like there was a grant attached to it, so.
Yes.
You know, I.
That two nine one five account is a granted.
Thank you.
We have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution dash two zero two four dash one two nine two. Approval of a contract between Genesee County and Paul Scott and Associates in the amount of three hundred four thousand dollars to provide legal representation for indigent fathers who are involved with the court and child protective proceedings. The term of this contract is from October one twenty twenty four through September thirty twenty twenty five. The cost of this contract will be paid from the accounts listed. Moved and supported, is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Yeah.
Um, you can just stay there. Like you said, I, I, I'm sorry, it's just kind of, how, how do we? Is this up to, they'll spend up to three hundred thousand and, three hundred thousand four dollars? Or, or three hundred four thousand dollars, or is this, how do they, how do we measure what they're spending? They were not just cutting a blank check and they work ten hours a year and then guess what, we walk away and go, hey, I got three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
So I, and I, not saying people would do that, but we do live in a world that, that happens that way and we're supposed to be, you know, good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So I'm just trying to understand, how do we track what they're actually doing, how many hours they're actually working? Or is it just, this is what we agreed to pay for this job for the year, this is what you get?
Yeah, so this contract is set up so that they get twelve equal monthly payments. What I will say is that our attorneys, um, it's very difficult to find attorneys who will work in these areas and our attorneys are very much, I would say, underpaid. So, um, they work a, a lot of hours. They do work a lot of hours representing the parents. Do we track their hours? We do not.
So. If I, if I may, and this is gonna, so, I'm trying to gather myself, because if I don't know how many hours, how can I say how many, how hard they're working, how much they're working? This, that's, I mean, I'm sorry, do they have four attorneys on staff for this, for three hundred thousand? Do they have two? Do they have one? Do I, do, do I know, or?
Yeah, I can answer some of those questions for you. So they have an attorney assigned to each judge and each judge has about six hundred to eight hundred neglect cases a year. These attorneys represent, the one attorney will represent every father in that judge's courtroom on that case from the time it goes to prelim until the case is closed. Sometimes child protective proceedings, those cases are open for twelve months, eighteen months. The law allows a parent, once their child is removed from their care, for them to have twelve months to get their child back before they can file a petition to terminate their parental rights. And then from that, they have a hundred and eighty-two days to, to finalize the termination. And so for that amount of time, one attorney, and that's one case, represent the dad from the preliminary hearing, which is the first hearing, at least every three months, maybe sometimes more often, until that case is closed, eighteen months to twenty-four months later.
Oh, Dr. Brown's question here.
Commissioner Brown.
Sometimes, can I just add this too? A lot of times on these cases, there are multiple fathers, so that one attorney will represent multiple fathers on a case.
I have two, go ahead.
Well, I was, there are multiple fathers, I'm trying, could you clarify what you mean by that, cause I.
Sometimes a mother has multiple children, they're in a neglect case, and not every child has the same father.
Okay, so they go in as one family and there's different fathers?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, I'd like, thanks for clarifying.
Absolutely.
Cause when you said multiple fathers, I'm like, I know we live in a world, times, up is down, down is up, but, you know, last time I knew, there was only one.
So I, I, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brown.
I have, uh, two questions. Um, the first one has to do with the different, the, the fathers. So Paul Scott and Associates handles the fathers.
Yes, that's right.
And then, um, Indigent Defense handles the mothers.
Yes, that's right.
Why, why to?
So sometimes a mom and a dad may have conflicts of interest. So different attorneys represent the mother and the father in a case.
Okay, and my second question has to do with, uh, since Berv is here, the, uh, new kiosk station that is being developed at the courthouse right now. Um, i- i- is that and can that play a role at all with some of, um, the indigent parents? And in terms of helping them navigate it, uh, with the paralegal, or is that just too lofty for them?
Well, they couldn't provide, they couldn't provide representation, like the attorneys that Rhonda's mentioning are of counsel. Their lawyers have been admitted by, in the Legal Resource Center, they can guide anybody, including the people that we're talking about, to information through those kiosks, which they could benefit from.
Right.
But it wouldn't substitute for legal representation.
So the kiosk is more of a navigation tool?
It is very much so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried. Uh, resolution two zero two four dash one three zero six. Approval of a grant award from the Michigan State Police in the amount of sixteen thousand, seventy-four dollars to provide for the development and maintenance of an emergency management program. The budget for this grant is attached.
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three one one. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Flock in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars to provide hardware and software products for twenty Flock Safety Falcon cameras. The term of this agreement is from October one twenty twenty four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. The cost of this agreement is fully grant-funded and will be paid for from the account listed. Moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three one three. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Fenton Township in the amount of eight hundred seven thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars, ninety-eight cents per year to provide policing services. The term of this agreement is October one twenty twenty four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. The budget for this agreement is attached.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there discussion? Commissioner Lloyd?
I'll defer.
Commissioner Kuzino.
Yes, uh, to the undersheriff.
You're already up there.
Yeah. Um, how long has this contract, you guys been down there?
In Fenton Township?
Yeah, in Fenton Township, you know, on top of your head.
Gosh, I, I actually worked, my first patrol position was in Fenton Township, so it's been a long time. Yes, probably.
Since the late nineteen hundreds.
Dinosaurs were hanging around.
And, uh, I assume that, uh, that everything, you're providing the service, they're happy with it. And, uh, Crystal, is the bill being paid?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, is there additional discussion? I saw you, I think.
Yes, um, quick question, so is this arrangement kind of like what we were talking about with the Mount Foundation and the, uh, other areas, just they're out there patrolling the sheriff's department?
They contract with us, sir.
Okay.
Fenton Township contracts with the sheriff's office.
Okay. And, um, and this has approval of an agreement in the amount of eight oh seven, so they're giving us the eight oh seven?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I guess.
Uh, Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Shoemaker.
So how many other municipalities do we have such an agreement with?
So work they're coming up, we have Fenton, Atlas, Vienna Township, we have Curly Hospital, we have several contracts. We have SROs in a lot of the schools, I think it's up to like nineteen schools, uh, school resource officers. Those are all con, people, other, other places that contract with the sheriff for services.
Yeah, I was aware of the school resource officers, but I wasn't aware of the, the policing, the full policing services.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And these are communities that would prefer to use the sheriff's capacity versus, versus having their own. Alright, uh, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Um, one, two things, uh, one, um, once again, it's October first, just, was it the township that held you up or?
I can tell you, sir, in, uh, our corporation councils here, we had, we had this presented and, you know, there's, we had elections this year and negotiations on the contract going back and forth. We, our, our side was in a time and manner. Mr. McMillan committed a test of that. We just, uh, it, it got assigned and it's, we, but we have, we're on top of this. We, we know what they're doing.
When it's in my jurisdiction, if you would let me know, as a former Fenton Township trustee and someone who knows all of them quite well, I, I mean, they, they, their board, I don't, wouldn't appreciate if we brought them something late on top of it. The other thing I want to just make a statement is Fenton Township residents and most of the residents I've talked to that are represented by the sheriff's department are very happy. Very, very happy. Our residency, as somebody who lives in Fenton Township and served on the board, the relationship is phenomenal. Um, the residents are extremely pleased with the officers we send them. Um, I can't speak for outside of, uh, my district, but I can tell you this, as someone who's worked a contract with the sheriff's department on Fenton Township Board and as a resident also, it's, it's a great relationship.
Thank you. Alright, do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three one four. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Vienna Township in the amount of one million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars, ten cents to provide policing and school resource officer services. The term of this agreement is from January one twenty twenty five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty five. The budget for this agreement is attached. Moved and supported, do we have discussion? Commissioner Kuzino.
Once again, same questions, uh, Mike, I, I know you was even commander, whatever it was called with that, uh, of the township. Yeah, and, uh, I know it works very well up there, like them, they're happy with it, et cetera. Uh, but have you, from our end of the contract, have you performed everything that's been asked in the contract?
Hundred percent, yes, sir.
Okay, Crystal, has the bill been paid?
And this one starts January first, it's not on the fiscal year. Next one, we'll have to talk about.
So as far as the day-to-day operations, they've fully paid the bills that we've invoiced for that. We did build into the contracts a couple of years ago, I wanna say maybe one or two contracts ago. Um, for any amount of time that they earn vacation time while working on these contracts that we bill for that. Because previously, people were earning a bunch of vacation, working on the contracts. They would move to general fund and then retire and general fund was picking up the bill for all of that unused vacation time to pay it out. Um, annually now, we look at each contract, how much vacation time was earned and then the different, the change from one year to the next and we send a bill. We collect that, we put it in this fund, so that when those people leave, we have money set aside to fund that vacation. Um, Vienna has not paid their twenty twenty-three bill, um, and their twenty twenty-four bill has gone out. Um, they've said they'll pay the twenty twenty-four, but they do not want to pay the twenty twenty-three.
I, uh, that's in my district, of course. And it's hard for me to justify them not paying a bill and then we're getting stuck with it. And I don't care if it's, you know, a dollar or two or a few thousand or whatever. But that is dispersed not only to the whole county, but other municipalities within my district. And I personally can't vote yes to push this forward to the full committee, uh, until that bill is paid. That's my opinion.
Do we have Mr. Shoemaker?
How much is that, Crystal, for twenty twenty-three?
Um, in total, it was ten thousand dollars. Um, I believe seven thousand was related to the actual township and then the rest of it was related to the SRO, which is school. So the school actually would pay their portion of that, ten thousand dollars.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Is, is the school aware and they are not paying theirs either?
Um, both bills, I believe, go to Vienna Township and then they get reimbursed the SRO portion from the school. I can double check on that, but I think that that's how that works. We send both bills to Vienna Township.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Um, is there late fees added to this?
We have not added late fees.
I mean, it's just like your taxes, you know, if you're late on your taxes, it goes into, sometimes that encourages people to pay so they don't keep building. So that might be something, you know.
And if I may, they're, they're, they're disputing, and I, I don't know, I may not be.
We don't have record that we did the service?
They, they said they closed out twenty twenty-three, they didn't have a bill, they've, they've closed out their twenty twenty-three. We say, I don't, I don't know their side. I think if, maybe we can get one of them to the table, I don't know. But they don't feel that they're obligated.
We should have some type of record, don't you think, Crystal? I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I think, so they're, they're on a December year end, we're on a September year end, but we would have sent, sent that bill shortly after nine thirty twenty-three. I think, um, their concern is, you know, with them being a twelve thirty-one year end, they weren't able to put a budget amendment through to fund that additional bill. And they said, well, you're billing us more than we agreed to here. So just a couple of things with the amount that you see over this multi-year period. There are paragraphs that say, this is based on who's assigned to you at this moment in time. If you request transfer of someone else to be assigned, your amount could go up. There's a paragraph that talks about union negotiations, so if the costs go up because of that, you would be billed that additional amount. And then there's the paragraph for the vacation time. So although we can't be exact to the penny on our budget, um, just like, you know, here at the county, we do our best guess, but it could be over depending on what happens. Um, so she's saying, my twelve thirty-one twenty-three is now closed out, I can't go back and do a budget amendment, so I don't feel like I should owe you that ten thousand dollars.
Can that be added to the total that's due now?
Uh, this is a new contract. I don't know if we could, I mean, that might be a question for legal, if we can build and pass, do invoices, I'm not sure.
I mean, if you don't pay your taxes, it goes to the next, it goes to the next.
I tried, they won't pay it.
So I got Commissioner Shoemaker and then Commissioner Lloyd.
And we've sent more than one.
Commissioner Ellenberg, are you, are you?
I'm done.
Okay, so.
This question is to the chair, to Mike. If we were to postpone voting on this and hold off, is that going to put you guys behind the eight ball as a point to try to get him to, to try to get, to try to get him to have discussions on this?
Yeah, we can sit down and negotiate. I, I don't know what, what that's looked like, because I was just, we were aware of this like three days ago. But as you see, we, Vienna or Fenton and Atlas, their fiscal years start on October first, that's coming up.
I just.
The Atlas contract, so I, I don't.
I, I don't want to put you guys in a bad spot, you know, as far as if something was to happen, but also, you know, to, there's, it seems pretty blatant that they're just in defiance and saying, we're not going to. And their opinion is.
And to your point, every other local unit has paid that bill, so I don't think it's fair for us to say you can be the one that doesn't pay.
Right.
What if that same wording is in your contract, just like all of the others?
Yeah.
But we've also fixed this problem, because it used to be that they would rack up thousands of hours in blast contract negotiation.
Yeah, we can't.
That was eliminated, so they have to take their time. So this, uh, somebody leaving in a hundred thousand dollar paycheck payout, it's not going to happen.
I, I think it's a bad precedent if we let it go. I just, you know, I don't want to put Commissioner Kuzinow in a bad spot, but I think he's voiced his opinion, he's, he's not in favor of this. So I would like to postpone it, maybe have somebody reach out from the sheriff's department, if you could, to them, and let them know this board is holding off on approving your contract until you actually pay this. I don't know if the rest of the board's okay with that, but I, I think that would send a message.
Send in the form of a motion?
I put that motion forward, yes.
Moved and supported. Commissioner Lloyd, speaking to the motion.
As a friendly amendment to your motion, can we postpone it to the, the last committee meeting we have in December, that's twelve, four, twenty twenty-four? It was a friendly amendment.
December fourth.
December, December fourth. And, um, you know, I agree with our finance here. You know, I think that not paying the bill kind of flies in the face of the spirit of agreement. You know, we provide the service and they pay the bill. You know, they pay what they're responsible for. And so if they're not doing that, then that, that's, that's not a good thing. And then I think by us postponing it and having some conversations, we'll put some additional teeth in this process. We're not saying right now that we, we won't approve, that we won't partner in this way. But now they have a responsibility, if they want to maintain a relationship in this sense, that they pay the bill. And especially as a resource officer for the schools, I mean, obviously, we want to do that, right? And we want to serve the residents, right? We want to do that, but their responsibility is to pay the bill, so I support it.
Any other discussion? All right, so the motion is to postpone this item to December fourth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Resolution two zero two four dash one three one five, approval of an agreement between Genesee County, Atlas Township, and the Goodrich School Board in the amount of eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars, twenty-six cents to provide policing and school resource officer services. The term of this agreement is from October one, twenty twenty four, through September thirty, twenty twenty five. The budget is attached.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Kuzinow.
Same questions, Mike. The sheriff's department has performed all their duties according to the contract you provided your services. And Crystal, they paid their bill, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional, additional discussion. Seeing Commissioner Lloyd.
I, I do, if the board will indulge me, the, the previous resolution that we just spoke about, who's going to make the contact with that municipality?
I'll work, I'll work with the sheriff's department to make that meeting happen, and I'll coordinate with Commissioner Kuzinow.
Thank you.
All right, additional discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three two seven, approval of a recommendation by Genesee County Surveyor for the appointment of the re-monumentation peer review committee members for twenty twenty-four grant year.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three four six, approval of a contract extension between Genesee County and Legal Services of Eastern Michigan in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide prepetition and post adjudication ancillary legal services for families involved in child welfare cases. The term of this agreement is from October one, twenty twenty four, through September thirty, twenty twenty five. The cost for this agreement is budgeted and will be paid from the account listed.
Moved.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three five five, approval to accept the fiscal twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five Michigan Art and Culture Grant in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars to provide visual and performing arts workshops to youth detained at the Juvenile Justice Center and the Learning Co-op. The term of this grant is from October one, twenty twenty four, through September thirty, twenty twenty five. The revenue from this grant will be accounted for per the attached budget form.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three five nine, approval of a proposed Genesee County website privacy and terms of use policy.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
I just want to make sure corporate, corporation council's happy with it.
We're on thirteen fifty-nine, yes.
Okay.
My team.
Thank you.
That means you've reviewed it and?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three six zero, approval of a grant award from the State Court Administrative Office in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars to provide for Genesee County Sobriety Court. The term of this grant is from October one, twenty twenty four, through September thirty, twenty twenty five. The budget for this grant is attached.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three six one, approval of a grant award from the State Court Administrative Office in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand dollars to provide for Genesee County Sobriety Court. The term of this grant is from October one, twenty twenty four, through September thirty, twenty twenty five. The budget for this grant is attached. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three six two, approval of a grant award from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, VGA in the amount of seven hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars to provide for Genesee County Sobriety Court's treatment services. The term of this grant is from October one, twenty twenty four, through September thirty, twenty twenty eight. The budget for the grant is attached. Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution two zero two four dash one three eight one, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Supreme Court in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to provide for, for the continuing convert, for continuing the conversion of the courthouse law library to Genesee County Legal Resource Center. The budget for this grant is attached. Moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution dash two zero two four dash one three nine zero, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Newkirk Electric Associates Incorporated in the amount of sixty thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars to, to install network drops and wireless expansion in Genesee County's Legal Resource Center. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Boom.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Was this sent out for bid?
Yes.
Did we get a lot of people that responded, or?
How many did you?
I think four, I think a bunch did tab or something.
How many people responded to the network drop bid, you know?
I think there's a big tab. There is.
Give me a second. That's fine. Don't worry, I'm good, I don't need to run.
Derek, what you got?
Uh, four people, four people.
Ready? Just one other one.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Is there any, is this company local or?
Newkirk is a local company.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We have no other business. This committee is adjourned at six forty-eight P M.
They're going to call the Human Services Committee, order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Kuzinow?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
We will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Probably moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Are there any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Public comments are closed. No communications, no old business, uh, new business. Resolution twenty-four, one three two one, approval of a request to increase a purchase order to Abbott Laboratories for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five in the amount of nine thousand dollars for a revised total of one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars to provide for additional infant supplies. The cost of this increase will be paid from the following account.
Move it.
Probably moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Lloyd?
Somebody explain this.
Rather than the necessity for the increase, I, I, thank you for coming up. Obviously, when we're, um, you know, supporting, um, those that are in need, obviously, there's a lot of parents and such, I'm sure, that are in need of, you know, supplies for infants and so on and so forth. Just curious, the necessity of change from nine thousand to one hundred fifty-six thousand in this agreement, is it a change in the program or something that happened?
It's only an increase of nine thousand dollars.
No, just an additional nine thousand.
Yeah, for a revised total of one fifty-six.
Forty-seven?
It was originally, you was, it was.
Okay, got it.
Get one forty-seven.
I'm clear, thank you.
Yes.
Could we get the reason, though?
Yes, as for our Head Start, early Head Start program, um, we, one of our incentives in our programs is we provide, we bring the kiddos, we provide the diapers and the formula snacks, and we provide all of that. So a slight increase in enrollment.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
And my apologies, I read it the opposite.
Any further discussion?
Ellenberg?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ellenberg.
So like when, um, Elga does like their diaper drive and all that stuff that's held across, you know, the county, you know, does, did we receive any help like that where we needed diapers, that they would donate them to some of the people, or, you know, like?
To the families that, um?
Yeah, or do we connect with them, like partnerships?
We, that's a definite no. Um, we don't partner with Elga when they have their drives. Sometimes, um, well, you have different funders that require, um, certain processes and, and policies for the diaper drives. When we have ours, um, there's a requirement that's met through, um, our income qualifying parents. We're able to say, or we are able to give X amount of diapers to all of our parents, uh, because they meet these qualifying guidelines. Our guidelines for our parents may not meet the guidelines for, um, the processes that, uh, however it is that Elga or another vendor, provider, um, acquires their supplies. So we don't partner with that because then we're taken all responsible and felt part of their guidelines that they have to follow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If that makes sense.
Uh, Commissioner.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so is this Abbott Laboratories contract? Is it for everybody in the out county or in, or who is it for specifically? Because what I'm thinking about is the RX Prescription Kids Initiative that pays for a lot of stuff for all newborns, infants in the county. Um, and so I'm wondering about if, if there's any overlap with that, and is it possible we could save any of this because of that effort?
Saves any of, I'm trying to make sure I understand your question. So the RX.
Can I just jump in real quick? I think that this is for the Head Start program, correct?
Yes.
We don't serve Head Start, do we serve Head Start for the city of Flint?
We, no, well, we serve all of Genesee County.
Right, but in the city of Flint School District, that we don't serve that school district, and the RX Kids is for the Flint City.
Right, that, and I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-four, one three two two, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Genesee Intermediate School District in the amount of five hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars for the Great Start Readiness Program. The term of this agreement is October one, twenty four, through September thirtieth, twenty five. Cost is fully grant funded and recorded in the following account.
So moved.
Probably moved and supported. Any questions, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wayhill?
So normally, I'd get notified if this is the case, so it's probably not, but I know that Mott College gets GSRP dollars for our early childhood. Is, is any of, any of this going to the program at Mott?
Mott is one of our delegates.
Okay, so this does cover the college, then? Okay, I'm going to abstain, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I abstain, as my employer.
Motion carries. Resolution twenty-four, one three three zero, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Global Clinical LLC in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred ninety dollars to provide behavioral health services for Genesee County's Healthy Start Initiative. Term of this agreement is November one, twenty four, through October thirty-first, twenty five. Cost of this agreement is fully grant funded and will be paid from the following account.
So moved.
Support.
Probably moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just had a question.
Commissioner Wayhill?
This initiative is for infant mortality for African Americans?
Well, it's not just, you know, primarily, but not just.
Okay, but not exclusively?
Yes.
Okay, um, and that's sort of not relevant to my question. What are some of the services that will be provided?
So for this particular, this, okay, so this is behavioral health services. Um, they'll have in-home social, social worker, this company has a psychiatrist on, um, also has a psychiatrist that can go in the home, and they will work with them for other mental health services as needed.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-four, one three eight five, approval of the Genesee County Health Department Plan of Organization.
So moved.
Support.
Probably moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Lloyd?
Can you talk about this a little bit?
So this is April, she's our accreditation. So this is April, she's our accreditation, we're getting ready to move into accreditation for the Health Department, it is in February. And the Plan of Organiz- Organization is one of the parts, she's our accreditation group here, the Health Department, so.
So the state of Michigan has had accreditation program for local public health for going on twenty-five years almost now. Happens every three years, we were paused during COVID, Havak Genesee County was the last health department that had their site visit in February twenty twenty, right before everything shut down for COVID, they restarted the program. We're now back on our three-year cycle. Um, we're coming up at the end of cycle eight, which is what we're in. Part of, one of our indicators for accreditation is we have to have a Plan of Organization, which talks about how we're organized, how we operate, who we report to, our budgets, um, any fiscal stuff, how we report to the community, all of that kind of stuff. And so the, the document that was submitted outlines all of that, um, and then we have a whole bunch of captions that gets uploaded and then the state approves it.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Brown?
Nice to meet you, April. Um, to what extent are we ready for, um, a stellar accreditation report?
We, we are ready. So this cycle looks a little bit differently for some of our programs because they're calling it a technical assistance cycle. There won't be a lot of, um, indicators not met or met because of that, where it's more of they come in and they say, hey, we were all, we were all hit hard by COVID, how you doing? What can we do to support you? Where are you? There are a few programs that, um, the state has said, no, because of federal requirements, we can't do that, you have to have regular accreditation site visit. We go through all the indicators, um, and usually what happens is there's a couple of programs where we always get a couple of dings just because of the nature of the program, the federal guidance, the onerousness, nature of them and everything. Um, and so then what happens is they say, okay, here's something you didn't meet, we say, okay, great, here's our plan, or here's our plan to correct the act, you know, corrective action plan. We submit it, the state says, and federal government says, yeah, this is great, go forth, we, we proved that we met that and they say, you're all fine.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lloyd? Thank you so much for your explanation. Just curious in terms of process, is this something that you review?
Yeah, so all of our documents go through a, a sequence and all those supporting departments review these items before they come to you.
And our, and our document has like sections like related to I T, related to finance, like all that, and so we worked with those departments to gather that information before it was even submitted for review.
Okay, okay, excellent, thank you, thank you so much.
Just, just one question, you may have said this and I missed it, who's the accrediting body?
It's the, so, um, Michigan Association for Local Public Health is, has the contract with the state of Michigan, but it's a state accreditation. So outside of WIC, which is accredited through this, uh, management evaluation process, which is part of the state and part of the federal government, and the same thing with Title Ten, Family Planning, it's primarily through the state of Michigan, whether it's M D H H S or Department of Agriculture or Elg-, or Eagle.
Well, the state and part of, um, um, no, it's, yeah, Eagle.
Yeah.
And Beach Accredited Body, whoever's providing the money to us, it's who does the accreditation.
Okay.
Beach Program.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And they come for like a week, everybody a different day and review everything, but we do pre-s submitted a lot by those.
Thank you.
Any further questions? You're all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution twenty-four, one three nine zero, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Newkirk Electric Associates? Wait a minute, I'm in the wrong place. Resolution twenty-four, one three nine one, approval of modification number three of an agreement between Genesee County and Oakland Livingston Human Services Agency in the amount of twelve million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars to provide staffing for Genesee County's Head Start Program. The term of this amendment is from October one, twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty-five.
So moved.
Support, properly moved and supported, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I want to ask a similar question, thank you, to what I asked before. Is, does Mott College get any of these funds? We have Head Start, I believe.
Yes, sir, this is, uh, in relation to item number two because of the dollars from G S R P. It increases our, um, agreement with also.
Okay.
So, um.
So the, the Head Start that is located, GSRP is not Head Start, I don't think, right? So Head Start is separate, we've got a site at the college, some of these dollars would go to that site? Or?
Some of the dollars could potentially go to the site.
Okay, well, just in case I'm staying.
Any further questions?
I don't want to get fired, so.
Any further questions? You're all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Abstain, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, ayes have it, motion carries. This meeting now stands adjourned.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order at seven o'clock. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Kuzno?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
I'm here.
Commissioner Davis?
Approval of the minutes, uh, for October sixteen. Been moved and supported, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, any public comments? Any public comments? Third time, any public comments? No communications, no old business, new business?
Madam Chair, on this item here, there was, this was an item that was postponed from our last meeting after some questions um, that commissioners had. I know that I've done some communication with some of you through email and tried to just break it down step by step, what's going on here. Um, so, once it's moved and supported, if you want me to go through that, I can do that, and if not, we can just move on.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, thank you so much for the work that's been done to put together additional information for us. What you provided is very, very helpful, helps to give a better picture of what this looks like. I don't have any additional questions.
We'll read the motion and then if there's any more further discussion.
We need to move it.
Resolution twenty-two, twenty-four, eleven ninety-nine, approval of agreement between Genesee County and the Flint River Shed Coalition assigning and transferring the operation incurred programs of the Flint River Watershed Coalition to the Genesee County Parks Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Support.
They moved and supported, any further discussion? Mr. Lloyd?
I, I have a, just another comment, I said it the other day when I made the motion to postpone it, but again, uh, in the county, when different departments or groups are working on these bigger pieces that they're going to bring to us, I like to see us brought in earlier in the process. Uh, we ran into this with nine-one-one, ran into it with this situation as well, there may have been others, but we get it and we understand what happens. We just need to be brought in, figure out a way to bring us in earlier so we can kind of progress along with everybody else, that's all.
Any other discussion? Mr. Shoemaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said before, I, and I thank everybody for the work and Brian and Josh and everyone for all the information provided. My, my concern is still from, you know, dollars and cents side, there's some liability pieces that, once again, like when we take the contracts on with the city for Operation Arrowhead or anything else like that, there are some liabilities that we take on, we've all sat in this room and discussed lawsuits that we've been involved in from the parks or other different organizations, this could one, we could also be involved. So, when we are receiving funding for this, it's only enough to fund this from the different grants, we need to set aside dollars for those things if you, if the board chooses to continue with taking this on or other groups. You know, it, it's, it's, it's a, you know, it seems like the board's consensus, they want this and that's wonderful, but the real issue is we've got to fund things outside of here, okay? There's additional costs, there's, you know, your opportunity costs of what we're giving up when we're putting man hours or other things into this, but there's also the cost of liability, which is a big concern. You know, we've sat in here, you know, too many times over the years with different cases and so on and so forth, so, and those settlements aren't small. You know, we're dealing with people on a river, which could lead to other stuff, so I just wondered if anyone had if there's a way to fund that, is there a way through, guess we come up and talk about, is there a way with these grants, we could, you can fund that and put, create a fund or is that against the rules or? How do we do that?
Yeah, so each, each department gets charged for those, you know, those liability issues through your C S A, and tell me if I'm wrong here, which we fund through our kind of, I call it a self-insurance fund to, to deal with that. And then also the cost of insurance that we have liability insurance, you know, in excess of, um, X dollar amount is also captured from each department every year in the budget. So we really do, we do capture those costs as we do our annual budget every year from each department and we try to pick a piece, you know, as much as we can from grant, grant sources, we try to include that to help outside any general costs.
Is this one that we can take those pieces out from and?
Yeah, C S A charges, I'm not sure if that's something that'll, um, be a hundred percent, but once you have insurance, it's like you have insurance, so we split in, you know, the cost of that insurance up fifty ways and now we're going to split it up, you know, fifty-one ways.
But it's all, we, the insurance only covers after we get to a certain amount.
Sure.
Which, what is that amount, Crystal?
It's our deductible, like three fifty or something?
Yeah, I think three hundred fifty thousand or something to that for certain things.
That's, that's a lot.
Yeah, and then our self-insurance fund has how much in it right now? Ish?
Yeah, I think about almost six million.
Six million in our self-insurance fund.
If we found one case figures back far y'all here, it can be ate up really fast.
Right. Yep, that, that's why we purchase the excess insurance, right?
So, yeah.
For those liabilities and try to mitigate that risk.
No, understood, understood, like I said, these, these are just things
Yep.
that I would like us to address going forward and I guess, my point is tonight, not just this issue, but other issues that we need to, instead of just talking about it, actually really look into how we're going to fund these liabilities later on, not just this, but other stuff we discussed tonight, so thank you.
And Commissioner, I think to your point, like, we do listen to what you tell us and that's what we try to do, right? So we go out and purchase that insurance, we try to capture that cost through grants where we can, so your voice doesn't go on deaf ears, we try to respond to those things, and I think sometimes maybe we do a poor job of communicating those kind of day-to-day, um, tasks. But we're, we're, we're responding to what you're asking us to do.
No, I was just going to say, I, I think it's, I think it's a great point made tonight, at least for me, because I, I, for the last two years, I haven't thought about the point that you raised. You know, the insurance piece is going to be what it's going to be, I mean, the liabilities, we had a policies and a self-insurance, that amount is, is what it is and so on and so forth. Um, but when you start talking about, you know, vehicles that's aligned with staff and grants and what is that? You know, like those, those outlying costs, it's, it's not something that I know, that I'm aware that we've talked about it and, and, and that is, you know, that recent, and maybe that's made up in some of the budget amendments, you know, that come through and that kind of thing, so I appreciate the point made because it's something else to be thought about as we're talk, you know, working through budgets and that kind of thing, so I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-four, one three four eight, approval of a request by Genesee County Parks Recreation Commission to amend Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, two oh one, a resolution approving the purchase order of Durango in Silverton for the construction of railroad train trucks, uh, allowing for the purchase of fiscal year twenty-twenty-five instead of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Moving. Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? See you in a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business? See you in a, we are adjourned at seven oh nine.
No, no.
We're trying to hit those.
No, it's just, it's just sometimes, no.
I know.